One of these days, I'd like to find out just because it doesn't make sense, it's confusing.
I call this town of Vinyl Haven Select Board Meeting for Tuesday, February twenty first, two thousand twenty three to order. Roll call, Wesley Dyer, John Young, myself, this is Bunker Deputy Town Clerk, Marjorie Stratton, Town Manager. Number two, approve the agenda, any? No, subtractions, additions.
Uh, not that I know of.
Okay, I move, we approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor? Number three, approve the minutes from the February seventh, twenty twenty three Select Board Meeting, so moved.
Definitely.
All is in favor. Approved and signed treasurer warrants number thirty four, so moved. All's in favor. Number five, communications. I believe we have any correct. Alright, number six, speakers from the floor.
My name is Dana Blackington, I would like to talk about the allocation for the legal fund.
Okay.
Um, I feel having gone through the legal system with the town that the last allocation wasn't uh properly handled. On November of two thousand twenty one, I settled with the town for nine thousand eight hundred and seventy seven dollars. Which uh the town was supposed to supply, I mean. The proof that they had paid their attorney this amount. Uh fourteen months later, I have just received all of the documents from the attorneys in that timeframe, the people forty five hundred dollars. So I would, that paid for it is five thousand dollars on account of four. In November, when we, when you all met to dissent my case. Um, there was some discussion that the town had put almost nineteen thousand dollars towards prosecuting and pursuing. So that would leave something like fourteen thousand dollars on account for.
Marjorie.
Well, I think one of the um. What am I trying to say? One of the problems with one of the figures that we brought up at a meeting was that. When I added up invoices that I had, there were a group of invoices that said Cripple Creek. And then there were a group of invoices that said land use violation. The one that said land use violation, I assumed was the uh either the one forty three Pequot Road. Or Cripple Creek, for that, it was in that same time period. So, the invoices, Dana requested copies of the invoices, I sent him all of the invoices that were identified as Cripple Creek. Because I'm not sure, I asked Fay to identify what the. Um attorneys invoices that are identified as land use violation, just the, there were no names or locations. In that grouping. But I, I don't recall what the invoices I sent Dana added to, I just sent him all of. Under right to know, I sent him all of the ones identified specifically that said Cripple Creek.
Okay.
And I don't know, it was before my time, so I don't know what the attorneys used. You know, I don't know how they came to their figure, uh you know, what they added up or.
Is that a question then that should go back to the attorneys, would they have their record?
We may have to. You know, because I don't have that.
Absolutely, I paid, I paid for it, the town represented that this was their bill.
Yeah.
The town pursues me, they have to take me to court to do that, and I don't have any problem paying that bill.
Yeah, no, and I, we will, we will get the proper records and provide that, I mean, you have the right to know that, that. That was the figure that was agreed upon in the settlement, so I would assume we have invoicing to back that up. This is the first that I've been. Brought, this has been brought to my attention, I didn't know you were looking for copies of invoices, if that had been brought to our attention.
Receipt for the money that I paid, almost three months ago.
Oh, come on. I um repeatedly told anybody that came and um gave me money on behalf of you that I had the receipts. And I specifically remember saying, I have the receipts Dana, and you said, keep them there. If you would like those receipts, I have them.
Okay, that, that is minor in this point.
Pardon?
That is kind of minor in this point, whether I've received a receipt or not.
I have them and you asked me to hang on to them.
Didn't town litigate in December with anybody at all?
In December of what?
This last December?
Yeah, this last December.
Well, the Hurricane Island is ongoing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I was under the impression that the town didn't have any money to continue litigation. As of November. Isn't that what was said at that November meeting on?
We were reaching the limit of the budget that had been approved, that doesn't mean we don't have money to pay for things. Just means we have to go back and ask.
Now for that litigation that hasn't been paid yet?
Yes.
Yeah, so I guess my question is, did you spend that money in December? Knowing that you didn't have the money in the account to spend that money?
We did have the money.
Well, why were you told in November that you didn't have any money?
We were reaching the limit of the budget that had been approved, that's different than not having money.
Okay. Need to explain that differently.
We, we allocated a certain amount in the budget for legal fees.
That was approved at last year's town meeting.
Right.
And we have reached. In November, we were very close to that limit. That does not mean that we cannot make payments, it means we have to go back and ask for additional funds or find other places in the budget to take funds. From to pay for said bills.
Okay. I still don't see the responsibility in that.
What responsibility are you referring to?
Well, I'm referring to the fact that there wasn't any money there, and now you're, now we're going to special town meeting. To allocate more money to cover this bill that's now on the table.
Are we not up to date on our payments on our legal bills?
There are outstanding invoices that I haven't paid yet.
Received, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And they know, and Drummond Woodson has been notified.
Right.
That we're.
We're working on it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, I. What else you, what else you were trying to ask, I guess is my question.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to ask, where is the responsibility in this? You, according to that meeting in November, there was no money to persecute, to prosecute, or to pursue anybody else, you didn't have the money.
We did have.
The town manager told you it was irresponsible to spend any more money legally. That's what she, that's what she said.
For those specific items, but again. How do I explain this? The town is still obligated to pay their expenses.
I understand.
We, we, we are still, we are still under litigation, we still have bills coming in, we have to pay those, we are counting for those. We have reached the limit of our budget that was approved, that's why we are going to ask. Next week at a special town meeting for additional funds to get us through the rest of this fiscal year into next fiscal year. And at this year's town meeting, we will ask for additional funds for that particular item in the budget. So that we can hopefully not have to come back for a special town meeting, we try to estimate our expenses each year. Sometimes we're under, sometimes we're over, that's what estimates are, you're not going to be able to predict the future. You have to give a best estimate of what you think you're going to spend. And if you do reach that limit, then you have to go back and ask for additional funds to pay for those things that you have agreed to pay for.
Who oversees where that money goes? Who's oversighting people like Kay Graham?
They has nothing to do with, they has nothing to do with what is paid. She's the code enforcement officer.
She has everything to do with. How the money is spent.
No, she doesn't, she has nothing, she has nothing to do with how it is spent. The town manager, acting as our treasurer. And the rest of our staff help us keep track of what payments we have to make, what funds are coming in, what funds are going out, we as the board of selectmen then.
I think his assumption is that it's due to land use violations, but it's, it's not.
It's not.
Hurricane Island.
Hurricane Island.
Assessing. It's an assessing issue.
Yes, that is, that is the larger. Side of the legal bill right now, the engineering fees from. Our, from Wood and Current, that has to do with the downtown project, but that isn't, again, that's not what's driving the legal costs. It's the Hurricane Island case, that is what is driving us up.
How much has the town spent since two thousand seventeen on the Hurricane Island case?
I don't have that, I don't have that number in my, in front of me.
A hundred grand, two hundred grand.
It's not, I, I, I can't tell you right off the top of my head, what, it's gonna be.
Ball pack twenty? More than that.
Since twenty seventeen?
Since twenty seventeen.
Oh, no, no, I'm talking about the last, this last year, so almost twenty, I think it was closer to thirty. Last year.
Yeah, in this, in this fiscal budget, I think.
Yeah, that's an ongoing issue, and it's been.
It's been over a few fiscal years, as I understand it.
Yes, because they're asking for. payments back to like twenty eighteen.
Totally, that. Well, before my time.
What is the purpose of spending? That money fighting them?
They're asking for debatement, they don't believe they should have to pay their property taxes, we disagree. We're asking for the judge to rule on certain aspects of that case before we can move forward, and it just hasn't happened.
The judge already made a judgment on that?
On part of it, yes, there are other aspects of the case that they have not ruled on, which is what we are waiting on. There's really just one more question, I feel, that needs to be answered, then we could move forward and be done with it, hopefully, but it hasn't been answered.
Is part of next year's or this next session of allocation of legal money. Anticipating a great amount of money to go towards fighting that?
No, we're hoping that it will come down next year, because we're hoping it'll. Be resolved before we get to the next fiscal year, but again, we don't know, the court system moves at its own pace, we have no control over that. So we still have to allocate for some legal funds, professional fees.
How much are you allocating for that legal fund? How, how much you got?
We haven't gotten through that portion of the budget yet, have we? I believe we have.
We got a special town meeting next week in.
In two weeks.
Two weeks.
March seventh.
And. Will you have a figure by then?
Oh, you.
Oh, I thought you meant for the next fiscal year, in two weeks.
I think it's in the.
Is it in the package?
Asking for forty five thousand, which is one, two thousand for legal fees and twenty five for engineering.
Is that for next year's budget or for this?
Special town meeting.
That is for the special town meeting, okay.
And that's, that is the intention of that, that the bridge gap?
That's to get us to the next fiscal year, next fiscal year.
Yes.
July first, yes, correct.
Okay. Well, I know.
Alright, we will work to get those receipts to you.
Yeah, that would be nice, I don't know why. Get the ones involved cases in the first place, you know, for both addresses. I believe I asked for all of the documents. From the attorneys that were involved in my lawsuit, not half of them.
I don't, I don't understand your.
Well, you explained that you only sent me half of the bills.
You can have those bills, but I don't know that they're pertinent to your property. I'm trying to get that answer from our code enforcement officer, but you're welcome.
So long to get an answer, right?
Why does it take?
Yeah, why does it take so long? This is when, how long's it been since?
I'll go send you copies of them.
That would be great.
Uh, but do you want those receipts?
No. I can come get it tomorrow, you guys got a business to take care of, thank you.
Thank you. Numbers, there's no more speakers, do we have anyone online that wants to, okay, then we'll move on. Number seven, committee and department reports appointment, what is in current status report?
So. Sorry, I just wanted to make a note, send those invoices.
Yep.
Um. So tomorrow we have the um. Preconstruction meeting for the transfer station. Uh, it is going to be a Zoom meeting with myself and Millie, uh the engineers and Ford Enterprises, it's at eight AM tomorrow morning. Um, I can give you those Zoom links if you're interested. Well, anyway.
Okay.
Uh, what else? We're meeting with the residents to um answer questions and sign the easements on March seventh and eighth. Uh, we have the easements and the mapping all prepared, we're ready to send those out to all the property owners. I think those are the highlights. Uh, dealing with our grant agencies is ongoing, doing environmental reviews, getting the permitting in place. All of that. I don't know if you have any questions about, I guess. The two, those two big, are the two big things that, the preconstruction meeting is tomorrow. We're meeting with residents to get the easement signed.
Okay.
On the seventh and eighth, do you need? We need notaries, yeah.
Okay, because Darlene is out and I have a training from nine to one.
She's out that, both days?
On the seventh.
Okay.
So we can work around it.
Okay. Well, it's.
So are you in the hope that after tomorrow's meeting, they'll have a construction start date?
They're likely starting in the, during the month of March, they want to get going.
Okay, good.
On the transfer station?
On the transfer station.
Oh, great. Good.
Um, and I'm continuing with the um. Matias Savings Bank to get the money in place, you know, I don't want to get it too soon and pay interest, but you know, I also want to have it available. They're holding that interest rate until April, you know, so if we, we start construction in March, we'll get a bill in April. But then there's thirty days to pay it, so.
So we get funding by April first, we should be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. The Grimes Park.
I don't really have anything to do with that, I think they're just.
I don't see why the town would have anything to do with it. It's all by the American Legion. I think it's just.
I think it's just included in their update, I don't really think.
Right.
Just because they are working on it.
It's town of Vinyl Haven, it's.
Okay, then basically we can just ignore that totally.
I mean, it's nice. Have an idea of what is going on there, but yeah, it's no obligation to the town. So the fire station design improvements, that's still to fit an additional or to fit.
A new truck.
A new truck. And then the public works building modifications, what's? Remind me what that is for again?
I'm sorry, Betsy um. Hopkins just uh emailed and said that she's available for notary if we need somebody that day, sorry. Um, remind you what.
The towns, of review with town, scope of work for public works, building modifications, what were we?
So there was about thirty thousand dollars left in that reserve fund.
Yeah.
Public Works Building.
Yeah.
And there were some punch list items that really needed to be addressed.
Okay.
Um, so there's no new money, you know, um, we felt that we could use up. What was left in the reserve fund that was allocated specifically for public works building.
Okay.
Um, and address. I call them punch list items that Sheridan, you know, needs to address.
Okay, but it's work that really needs to be done?
Yeah, for instance, the, the flooring is such that, of course, it's a concrete and it. It needs to be somehow leveled up because um. Snow and rain comes in there and then kind of floods into the office areas. So, I mean, there's little, there's things like that that just, you know, need to be addressed.
So we're spending it, not because we have money to spend, because there actually is a need.
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah.
It's, yeah, so it sounds like. You don't know what you have to fix until you get in there and start working in it.
Yeah, but again, I just don't want to spend any money just because the money's been out.
No, 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 no.
No, it, it isn't that at all, because. Millie kept saying, well, this and this and this needs to be addressed, you know, again, a lot of little things, but little things add up. And I, I looked and saw that there was about thirty thousand left in that reserve fund. So she said, well, great, let's, let's address that.
Okay. Alright, any other questions on? The status report?
What's the vinyl coal project?
That's that grant uh Vinyl Cove and North Haven Road to do some testing, to um. Or planning, if you will, for um what we could do to mitigate with that. Um, the Vinyl Cove Culver and North Haven Road.
Yeah.
In earlier meeting Jake, and I think the WU had also mentioned up handed. That after a ten year period, we can look at other options on trying to solve that problem rather than just raising the road. Like maybe putting some stone in there, and but I spoke to Millie about that, I mean, though it's too magic about that, and. Uh, the question of what, what will we have to go through to, to, to do that, that mitigation? Because I think raising that road is. Probably not the right way to go about.
My answer was one of permitting, that any, anytime you add material of that nature to a water body. You know, you're, you're talking um DEP and Army Corps and DMR permitting.
But we're replacing what was taken out because of poor judgment and.
Doesn't matter what was, it matters what is.
Yeah, I'm saying.
That's what they will say to you.
Would think it's worth an effort to just to not just look at raising the road.
Sorry, I'm drawing a blank on where, where we're talking about, because is this day aid road, it's not, correct?
By the minute.
It is.
Alright, because then that's. That also, I don't, can we just go in there and raise the road ourselves, right, it's stated, well, they would, the state would have to do it, I would think.
Yeah, but.
And I think, didn't Andy have them come look at that?
Yeah.
At some point?
Yeah, when they were out here doing all that.
Mm-hmm.
But. You know, that was not an issue until we took that out. And so the question is, how much would it cost, once, if we had the permitting to. Really solve the source of the problem, not the result of the problem.
Right, I think it's a combined thing though, to, to narrow the culvert or whatever, to the culvert and to the road, it's a combined.
You get, I guess we do one right, the other might not be necessary.
Maybe.
True, well, it wasn't necessary for probably hundred years, it's probably not necessary now.
Alright, so we want to aid new business community care partnership of Maine disposal.
Uh, I was hoping that uh somebody, or maybe.
Nobody.
Um, so I had a meeting with um. Let's see, Dick Young, who is chair of the Medical Center, Cam, who is the director. And then uh these people, uh John, Dr. Jonathan Busco. And his associate Katie Butler, who are part of this um. What do they call it, Community Care Partnership of Maine, they're proposing this um. Community project, if you will, to review, well, it says the Vinyl. Even can, the proposal is that the Vinyl Haven community will participate in a main health access foundation grant. Funded, funded planning project to assess challenges and healthcare access on Vinyl Haven. Work with partner organizations to develop options to improve healthcare access, and then choose one of the options to be implemented. This is a planning project, and as such, there's no financial obligation. There's also no obligation at the end of the project to commit to an option with a new or increased cost. But they are asking us um. As they're asking the municipality, or you know, the board of selectmen. To sign on to this, because at the end of the day, they are asking. You as the municipal officers uh to bring something to the community that they. That this organization is going to research and suggest, so. As they put it, we're asking that at the end of this process, a decision is made to select the options developed by members of the community. Even if that decision is just to maintain the status quo. So I was pretty um honest with them at this meeting, that I, that. I, as town manager, have so much going on that I was, I said I can't really commit any time to another project. Uh, it will mean um community meetings and um surveying. And I said, I just, I have to start saying no to things, because the next two years are really, I mean, things are already speeding up. Such that, you know, it's, it's busy, you know, there's a lot going on, so I said, I would not be able to commit uh very much time. Ryan said that he could commit a few hours on to it, the medical center. Would really like to participate in this program, and Dick Young said that his board members would be willing and act, you know. To participate in the program, so um. You know, the, I guess that's. How I think about it um. You know, it's a, it's a good opportunity, but at the end of the day, we don't know what the proposal will be. You know, it's, it's sort of difficult to. For me to buy into the process when I'm not really sure what the end is going to look like.
And you're busy as the devil.
Right.
And you're very busy.
I, you know, so I. So the questions I had is who will, who will participate in the work um? I don't, I personally don't feel like I have the staff available to um. You know, facilitate the community meetings or um. You know, facilitate surveys and collecting surveys, and you know, you think about, oh, well, that's not going to take much time. But once you commit to it, it does, you know, and I guess that's, I'm not opposed to it, I hate to, you know. We want to be a, a good partner to the medical center, you know, of course, but I just. Time wise, I have to, personally, I have to start saying no, because I just, in the next two years, I see things really ramping up. And being extremely busy, I mean, I know what it was like during the uh wastewater treatment plant construction, and it was, you know, it gets. Uh, very, very busy. And we're going to have the, right off the bat, we're having, we have the uh transfer station project. Uh, that will be going on, and you know, we're really gearing up for the downtown project, those easements are going to get signed and. You know, the permitting will get done, and you know, so it's um. I mean, I can already feel the, you know, the activity increasing, so. I was pretty clear to them that I could not commit any time to it, so I'm not sure what um.
You know, they have in here is an ask of the board is like two hours in phase five to review the final auction, so I don't. I guess like when it, what's the timing of this, are they trying, is this like going to be a year long project, are they going to be done in the spring?
A year long project.
So like this time next year, they're going to want two hours of our time?
This time next year.
Because they're saying the board.
The only work.
The select board. Select board.
Two hours in phase.
Five to review the final options and make a decision, so like a year from now.
It also says we'll participate in various phases of the process.
I mean, there's just not a lot to go on, like, what is the starting, one of these? When, when do they need our participation, because, yeah. I, just like everyone else, I have busy times and I have downtime, but then I also want to take my vacation, so.
Right, and this sounds, this sounds to me like it's an outreach project and. The Medical Center has outreach team, so. They should be the ones to do the outreach.
Well, I think that certainly. I think the board has, has an interest in what they do from the community, but the question is about resources, what would they expect from the board?
Right, that, that's not, there's just not, there's not enough here for me to make a decision.
Well, would it be worth meeting with, with whomever and discussing it and, because, you know, I have the time to do something like that, it'd be interesting to see just what's, what is involved.
If someone had attended tonight. You could have asked their questions, but.
No, I thought that, that this Jonathan Busco was gonna sign on, I thought maybe Cameron. Cam, the Director would sign on in our meeting, but there's nobody.
Well. I don't think anyone here is saying no, we just need more information before we can make a decision. Obviously, I'm not. And what's, what's in the proposal is. Maine Health Access Foundation Grant funded, but have healthcare access on vinyl haven't. I have any problem looking into something like that, but again, there's just not enough information there for me to make a decision right now. So. But think. The access is not great. Part, because we live on an island, it's just not enough services here. All right, move on to nine old business, approve and sign special town meeting warrants. This is all coming from fun balance, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, you sign.
Sorry. We signed the special town meeting warrant as presented. Getting ahead of myself there, there we go.
I think one of the things, though, we should be prepared to, is make sure that we can, we've got our ducks in a row and. Cause there might be some questions of why do you need the money, kind of, actually, we're here.
Yeah, that's fine.
Have the. Be prepared, I guess.
Well, again, I'll say if anyone does listen to this later, we make estimates based on historical trends and what we spend on certain items in the budget. And we use that information to, to present it to the town, think this is what we're gonna spend, hopefully it's less than that. And they approve it, unfortunately. We're seeing more professional service fees and legal fees this year than we anticipated, that is why we are running into a problem. With the budget on that particular line item, that's why we're asking for additional funds.
And then, now that's, that's saying that's gonna come up.
That's fine, and people can ask those questions.
Yeah, well, they should.
Yeah.
This particular budget line, we have reached the budget.
Right, there are many other items within our budget where we haven't reached that and we're gonna be under, which is great. But again, forecasts are just that, it's a forecast, it's an estimated guess, it is never right.
Especially with lawyers involved.
Exactly, you get into the legal system, you just, you're stuck. You want to get out as soon as you can, because it's gonna cost you. An arm and a leg.
Yep.
Okay, nine B revisit airstrip extension discussion, possible budget item.
Well, I guess, you know, Elizabeth did an awful lot of research on past discussions and um. Um, Elizabeth tried to compile as much as information as possible from past meetings. I guess the bottom line for me is that if you want to pursue that, this um. Maybe put some money in the budget for a survey. Um, I had intentions of contacting some people, but I just never got there. Um, in terms of, you know, getting some ballpark prices, but I think Donald was right. It's gonna be between five and ten thousand, if you're talking about surveying. Two or three different owners' property at the end of that runway.
Where we put that in the budget, I guess.
Well, we have a um. Under town property, we have a line for the.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So I, that's what I would. Think where I think we should put it or.
I mean, we should probably do it this year, and if it doesn't get done, add a little more next year and then. To cover it, no, 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 you know, agreed, so. Yes, let's, let's put the end of the budget for this. So I think it does need to be addressed. Sooner rather than later, we didn't. I think extending it would increase the safety up there, so.
Yeah, we haven't put any, well, we've just put the normal things in there for now.
Okay.
What do you think, like seventy-five hundred or?
I'd, yeah, I'd just say put the ten in and we'll go from there.
Based on some worth I had on a proposal on. Ten is gonna be. May, maybe exceeded.
Exceed the cost or be under the cost. The cost will be more than that.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking too, but that's why. Put in the budget this year.
Or should I put it in a reserve fund?
Well, if, if we put it into that line item, we don't use it, it goes into a reserve fund for that particular item, doesn't it, or do we have to designate it as a reserve item?
You'd have to, this is an operating fund, um, this account.
Right, so then maybe we should make it a reserve item. Cause it's not necessarily gonna be part of the operating budget, because we still don't know, do we have? Have we been given an easement by those two property owners? I don't, I don't know, like, do we have an estimate of how much it's actually gonna cost? Who's gonna do the work, like? The way things. Or how difficult it is to get someone to do that type of work.
Those were the phone calls that I was going to make, um, had some leads, uh, but I just never got there.
That's okay, yeah, I mean.
I was away, uh, at a wedding this past weekend.
It's not gonna be on this fiscal year budget, obviously, because we only have what, four months.
Twenty-three.
But.
Twenty-four.
Do we think we're even gonna get it done this calendar year? I, I'd be surprised we did, because once we get into the busy season, we're not gonna have time.
So it makes sense to put it in a reserve.
Yeah, I think so, and then. We move in the operating budgets for the. Next fiscal year, because we've done the legwork to get it set up and ready to go.
But if we do go into a recession, you may find that uh, surveyors who were picking and choosing and charging as much as they could. May become a lot more reasonable if we have a recession in the fall.
Yeah.
I don't, I, yeah, I don't, I just. Seems like they are all very expensive, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, everything is. I don't think. Yeah, there's, there's still a bunch of work that has to be done before even we could start.
Yeah.
The project itself, I don't know how long it would actually take once you had the materials and someone to do it, but.
But again.
Neither way, I think it makes sense to put it in a reserve fund, have it there so that when we can.
Do all we want to, yeah.
And we can, it's there.
Great.
The twenty-four budget starts when?
July one first.
This year, coming this year.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that, yeah, that's, that makes, do it in reserve, be done with it, yeah, yeah. They said we might get a rain, snow, flurry.
It's a base form.
All right, nine C budget workshop. What do we want to go through tonight?
Is there anybody from the bike committee that's setting in and, and working with us on this?
Eric has been, but.
They're gonna have them their own meeting, um. What did I say? No, it's this week, it's Thursday.
Twenty-third.
Thursday at two o'clock.
Okay.
Yeah, tomorrow is the pre-construction meeting. Thursday at two o'clock, the Budget Committee, so we have Margaret. Uh, Bill Alcorn did say he would come and participate, and you said Eric.
Coming tonight, actually.
Well, I meant Eric Davis, but.
Eric Davis is participating. And Banner Moffett.
And Eric Gasparini indicated he, I saw him at, at the Samba the other night, and I was asking you, I thought you were gonna be on it, so no one. Has said anything, what was that in the budget? I'm just repeating, repeating what he said, and uh, so I should, but the, the implication to me was he intended to participate, but hadn't.
Okay. Well, are there any items in here that we should look over tonight? And then we'll wait to hear back from.
Well, I did the law enforcement and we looked at that one, we decided to only budget for one, but based on our meeting this morning. I think it should budget for two deputies.
Does sound like it, yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, that's good, that's what we all want, so. So we'll have to go back to that.
Well, actually, I hadn't, I hadn't switched it over to, I had budgeted for two. So that's where it is right now.
The one, oh, the one eighty-nine is two, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll go back and just check it.
Okay.
But uh, it looks like we're pretty good on that one.
Do you have? Just overall, what is, right now? What is the town's budget looking like compared to last year? What kind of increases?
I don't know.
You don't have an overall number yet, again.
Um, what I am working on is just that, um, Andy had just a separate summary. Budget, um, that would, I think that's what he prints in the town report. So I went back and started working on that. Um, I mean, I, I did this budget book for myself when I was here in the past. But I never did the whole book for everybody else, I just gave. Uh, the selectmen more of a summary, I don't mind doing this, but it, it's, it's a lot of work. Because every time I change even one.
Right.
Part of every budget.
Yeah.
Have to make new copies and enter them in, so it's a lot, it's a lot of work. Um, to make sure everybody's book is as up to date as it can be, um. So, I mean, I don't know, going forward, I don't. I guess I would. I would rather just do the summary. Um, that gives you the, the bigger picture, if you will. Uh, instead of doing a book for everybody, but then I always had, you know, if somebody said. Well, what, you know, why is this increased by two thousand dollars, what's in this line? And then I could just read off what was in that line, but. Well, for instance, I asked Margaret around the Budget Committee, but she said she likes the, all the detail. So she wants the, you know, the whole book and the detail because she likes to review that.
Is this, like, is this summary too much? Or?
I don't know, like.
This right here.
What, there's a separate document, I'm trying to use what Andy has set up.
Yeah.
So those summary pages, like, there's a, there's a work, there's an Excel workbook.
Yeah.
For each department, and that's at the front of each workbook. But then there's a separate document called Budget History that. Has um, a couple of years actual and the current budget and then the proposals. And that seems like. More, if I was a selectman, that's what I would, you know, I want that.
This.
Kinda, yeah, it's that.
Which I use this first, sometimes these are. Helpful, but.
Right.
Yes, I, I understand, I'm just trying to, because I understand if she, if you have to go and change printed copies or something, every time you make two or three changes, it's just.
Extremely cumbersome.
If we have the summary page and we have a question, you'll have.
I started doing my budget like this when I was here, that's where these pages kind of came from. Andy expanded on it, which is great, you know, and he started providing a book for everybody. Again, it's fine, but it's, it's a pretty cumbersome.
Right, and that's, we should be efficient whenever we can, so.
Yeah.
In the past, didn't the Budget Committee meet separately and basically go put together a budget and then brought it to the town?
It's kind of all over the place from one, from my twelve years that I was here. Sometimes they would, um, sometimes they would meet with the selectmen, it was whatever the Budget Committee was at the time and what they wanted to do. Sometimes they would meet separately and they would, um. I think most of the years that I would, was here, they would make a recommendation, it would be printed in the town warrant. Whether they recommend, recommended it or not, and they, and it would actually have the vote. Like there were, if there were nine members of the Budget Committee, they would, um, they, so. Uh, I don't know how it was just stated, like approved.
Budget Committee recommends.
And then the vote, it even had the vote, like, five to four, so that people could see how the Budget Committee voted. I mean, it doesn't make sense for, to just have. The selectmen, it's kind of a moot point for the selectmen to say that they recommend the article. Because you wouldn't be putting the article in if you didn't recommend it, I mean, that's, you know. But it always used to have Budget Committee and then uh, the selectmen's vote as far as approving that article or not. Or recommend.
Seems like a good way to go, take a lot of work off from you, I would hope. That coming in there, unless you have to be right there with it.
It's, it depends, um. Oh, there's Cam, uh, so, um. I mean, if, if the Budget Committee meets, then I meet with them, so that's two, um. Committees that I. Have, not have, you know, it's my responsibility to meet with that, so it's. It's not less work, it's about the same work, it's more meetings.
I guess I would think that, you know, in the past, you know, way back when I was much younger, living here. That the, the Budget Committee always went through all this stuff. And then I thought they brought it to the selectmen for their review, and then. Based on the selectmen's review, that became the proposal.
I think it was more of a collaboration.
Since I've been on the board, we take into account what the Budget Committee recommends.
Yes.
At time, in some years, we've actually met with the department sets at the same time as the Budget Committee, so everyone can be there at once, they don't have to meet.
Yeah.
Twice with everyone, um.
And I bet the budget is a lot bigger now than it was back then.
Well, the, the other thing I was gonna say, I don't think there's been nine people on the Budget Committee since I've been on this board, so, we, we've had some. Dedicated folks have been on it for several years and they've done a great job. We, we definitely don't have nine members.
Cause it'd be nice to get back to that, with more, more community involvement.
Well, one, but your proposal at the special town meeting is to reduce it to five.
Right.
Right.
We can always, we can always put it back up if we need to, but for now. If they can't get a quorum, because they don't have nine.
Yeah.
But they can get a quorum if they have five.
Yeah.
Just do that.
Makes sense, yeah.
I mean, it's, I just like to see them take a more active role than what they have.
Well, they did last year.
But it, again, it's the same, it was the same people that on it and. When you get no, you know. I appreciate them doing it, but it probably is, you know, it's. It's kind of anonymous, it's not, it's fun, so. it's kind of anonymous. It's not, it's fun, so if you've been doing it year after year after year and no one else is showing an interest to take your spot.
Right.
Like you said, we need more engagement for the rest of the community to be involved in it. It's, you can't just be the same people doing everything.
Yep.
Well, I'm meeting with them on Thursday, so we'll see, you know, how that goes. I'm, I mean, uh, I will take the, um, the heat on, you know? Part of that, I you know, I didn't really uh contact them in order to get together because, well, the ordinance, the ordinance says that the chair of the budget committee will call their meetings.
Yep.
So I was kind of looking to them to call their meetings and they were kind of waiting for me. You know, so, um, six one.
But, you know, a change in management in the year prior, so maybe Andy had reached out to them in the past and you're still
I'm still.
Working your base, yeah, working your staff back in, yeah, it's.
Uh, I just noticed that Cameron Garrett and Duke Young are on.
All right. I assume they want to.
You want to back up to the.
We can go back to not, um, eight A Community Care Partnership of Maine proposal.
You want to address them or what?
I, I, so we had already gone through this item. We just were saying that we just need more information on what it is you're asking of the board, um, before we can really make any kind of decisions. So if there's more you can present on what this would entail and what would be required of us, then please, we're all ears.
Hey, Marjorie, just checking in. Did Jonathan Busco show up?
No, no.
Oh, well, that's not helpful at all, is it? So, I mean, he's actually the person who would have been doing a presentation, um, and I'm not sure that I can fill his shoes. Basically, uh, the Community Care Partnership of Maine is an accountable care organization, um, and we're partners with them. Um, and they, Jonathan Busco, he's a doctor up in Bangor, is a specialist uh, in EMS in the state of Maine. So he sits on um, kind of a statewide body that has been looking at the struggles of um, EMS across Maine and the sustainability of their services. And so one of the things that they have on offer is, um, a paid process, um, that involves the community members to talk about EMS. Um, the, the way it's structured, uh, whether that works well for the town or it doesn't work well for the town, whether it's sustainable or not sustainable, and whether there are other models, um, that might be more sustainable, um, for the EMS service. So it's, I feel like ICMS is kind of a, a bridge in the conversation because we're part of the Community Care Partnership of Maine where this offer is coming from. Um, you know, not, not having a, a bone in the fight one way or the other. Um, although we know that we, as an institution, have had to provide quite a bit of support to EMS over the last couple of years because of the staffing pattern at EMS, so. Currently EMS, um, doesn't have a high level paramedic. And ICMS has been filling the gap, so our providers go out on all the EMS calls. Um, that's a service that's not paid for, um, and it actually costs ICMS quite a bit of money to provide the service, uh, because of the way we're structured. So when a provider goes out on, on an EMS call, we don't gain revenue from that, but we have to actually pay the salary for that. We're not allowed to take that out of our HERSA grant. We also have to buy additional, um, malpractice insurance because our government malpractice insurance only covers the provider in their role as a primary care provider, not in the role of EMS. So we're looking at ways to, um, A, make ourselves whole. We still want to support EMS and we would never pull out. Uh, the board made a resolution to continue to provide the services even at a loss to ICMS, but it's not a sustainable proposition for either the town or ICMS. So that's where Jonathan Busco's group comes in. They've worked all over the state of Maine, including in the very, uh, most rural parts like Jackman, um, to help communities sit down and talk about what, what, what the future of a volunteer EMS looks like. Um, how to make it sustainable going into the future, what some potential options are, what the cost of those options are. Um, and what they bring to the table is the twenty-five thousand dollars um, and the facilitation of those conversations, so, but I, I'm sure I have not done this justice in the way Jonathan Busco would have done it.
We only have, uh, three selectmen here tonight, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I mean, I think the timelines are so tight. I think what they, what, because they're they're doing a grant with MEHA. And I think the letters of support were due in a couple of days, and if we didn't have the letters of support, the twenty-five thousand dollars is off the table. I'm, I don't know if that's something that's possible in a future year, but I, 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 I do understand the timeline around this and I think if there's not a quorum to vote, probably it's not even a possibility.
No, we have a quorum.
Yeah.
We're just down two.
Okay, uh, can I add something? Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, good. Uh, yeah, I, I think Jonathan would facilitate, uh, folks hearing from the town folks what they want, hearing from the EMS service what it wants. It would actually facilitate the conversations, but he says that the, what the results are not binding. They're, they usually try to come up with options that can, uh, be considered, uh, and, and, and also analyzing the cost of those options, which I think sometimes it gets pretty complicated when you get into the billing parts of all of this. Uh, how to, you know, and staffing options. Uh, so we saw it as an opportunity that uh, that kind of conversation would actually be paid for so that, uh, we would actually have money to help have that conversation among everyone.
Well, what I, what I had, um, expressed to the, um, selectmen earlier is the same thing I expressed to, um, you, Cam and, and Dick and, um, that I'm incredibly busy and I expect to be very busy in the next, uh, year, and I, I just don't feel like I can say yes to anything that would involve my time. I just, I wanted to be very clear on that. I just, I have to start saying no to new things that might take up my time, so, um. I, I don't want to, um, give the impression that I don't want to be a partner with the medical center. I don't want to, you know, we certainly appreciate everything that the medical center does, but um, I, I'm just, I'm starting a transfer station project this month or in March. Uh, the downtown project is gearing up. Uh, we're getting our easements signed and, you know, things are going to be speeding up quickly. Uh, and I, so I just wanted to be clear about that.
Mm-hmm. What are the expectations from your group for the town?
Well, for me, again, this isn't, I, I want to be clear, this isn't something ICMS is like trying to drive or a pass through. Um, we, we're interested in it, obviously, because of the situation we find ourselves in, and we think that there needs to be some thoughtfulness into the sustainability of EMS. Um, we would want to be, uh, an equal partner, like everyone else. I, we would want to come to the table on equal footing with, with EMS, with the town, with, you know, with, with, with any various interest groups of the town. We're just one more voice at the table. So it's like I said, I don't, I don't, I don't have a bone in the fight. I'm not trying to push this. I think it's an amazing opportunity. I think they did great work in, in Jackman. Um, and in some other really deep rural parts of Maine to help them come to grips with the sustainability of their service and making their service profitable. Um, it, but again, if, if it's like, it's not the right time. Uh, we don't have the bandwidth. I don't, I don't have any hard feeling about that. Um, we're, we're just, you know, know that eventually we need to grapple with EMS. Um, and the sustainability, I mean, I've talked a lot to Ryan and I know some of his struggles with an all-volunteer EMS and the dwindling of volunteers and that kind of thing, so. I mean, I definitely think we need EMS on the island. It's a critical, vital, important service. We all want to support it. I don't know how long ICMS can support it at a substantial cost and again, to be clear, last year we spent about sixty thousand dollars, um, in EMS, um, expenses. So it's not a small amount of money. Um, I don't know if folks in the town are aware that ICMS operates on an operating deficit. Um, we have a very diligent board that makes up for that with fundraising. But it's not also like this is a situation we can continue, um, to assume. Um, again, having said that, our board did take a vote, um, in good faith to continue um, supplying services until we get a better solution. We don't want to leave the town without qualified EMS services.
Magic, if I heard you correct, it's not just you. We really don't have enough staff to take on additional work. So question then becomes, what would be the expectations of, not Magic, but the, the staff that we have here?
I'm not sure. I know that they, um, specifically, well, Ryan would have to spend some time with, with the, um, grant people.
Yeah, they were talking about twenty hours of Brian's time, I think, uh, somewhere.
Over a period of.
Was six to nine months in the initial conversation, so they do a lot, they do the legwork. I, they're, they're, you know, they, it's basically a series of meetings. Um, with like a focus, focus group meetings, if you will. Um, to kind of take perspectives and recommendations and suggestions. They kind of take the intel back from what everybody's saying and come up with proposals that reflect those recommendations and also share what other towns have done. Um, and then kind of float that back out. Um, and then come up with a final proposal which goes to the, the town for review because the town really, um, is, is the owner of the EMS service.
So is, at this point, would it just be Ryan? That would have to participate or?
It's an impact. When you're talking about doing surveys and using public space, you know, there's always going to be some sort of impact to us making sure the rooms are, um, ready or, you know?
Yeah.
I'm not saying that it's, it's a significant impact. I'm just trying to be clear that I personally don't want to commit to something for this next year because I believe, you know, that this next year for me is going to be extremely busy.
So really then, the question is, how do we participate without your participation?
Right.
And is that adequate? From your perspective?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Dick?
Yeah, well, you know, I wish Jonathan were here. I, 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 I'm sure that is, you know, when they get the grant, he would bring us some manpower, but I think, uh, it probably some of it would fall on the, on Ryan, uh, to really play, you know, somewhat of a leadership role in some of the activities, you know? It's basically sending out surveys. It's probably having focus group welcoming town people to come and speak. Uh, it's bringing all the parties, the stakeholders together in meetings just to get the, you know, the, to get the chance to analyze what the opportunities are. But I don't know enough to be absolutely clear about, you know, there's some legwork there and, uh, and.
Sounds like Ryan has a time that's worth doing if he has a time.
Yeah. I don't think it was an incredible amount of time for him.
Has he, it sounded like he was.
I think, uh, from our previous meeting, he was fine with the number of hours. Is that your recollection, Cam and?
Yes.
I think Ryan is very interested in it, but not at the, you know, not, not again at forcing it onto anybody's agenda, you know, if there's not time. I mean, at the end of the day, that, you know, like I said, EMS is part of the town service and the town really has to be on board to make it happen. Um, and, you know, again, if the timing is the issue, the timing is the issue, no harm, no foul, lots going on. Um, you know, I just think it's an opportunity. It's, it's twenty-five thousand dollars. It's very skilled, successful um, facilitators who have done this all over Maine. Those are all the plus points. Um, we definitely have an issue that we need to grapple with at some time in the next one to three years. Um, you know, but I, I, again, like I said, I feel like a pass through and not, not somebody that's trying to convince you to vote. I want you to vote if it's important and feel like the timing is good. I want you to feel free to say the timing is not good if the timing is not good. No, no harm, no foul. It's not about whether you're um, partnering with ICMS in a, in a, in a good way. You already beat up.
So what, what would you need from us tonight? Just a letter?
It's a letter. He's, I'm asking for a signature on a letter of intent, which is already written, and I believe, uh, Marjorie, will you?
Did you hear us talking about you?
I did. Well. I'd like your input on this, what, I mean, I'm not, none of us are opposed to signing a, you know, a letter, what was it, an approval letter or anything like that?
Support.
Letter of support, it's just I know everyone is very busy and I don't want to take away someone's time. So. If, if you're willing to do it, then I, I don't think we have a problem.
Yeah, I've got a couple of programs that I'd like to start in the next fiscal year, but I, this doesn't sound like anything that I wouldn't be normally doing anyway, poking through my budget, looking at numbers, that kind of thing, talking to people. Um, perfectly fine with all of that. Um, from my recollection on a lot of this that Dr. Busco talked about was uh, focus groups, working groups that involve town residents who were going to be actually doing a lot of the discussion and idea generating and then would just be a sort of a mouthpiece on the matter.
So there'd be in, there'd be input from the community. Doesn't necessarily have to be a town employee, though, is what I mean, is what I'm hearing, correct?
Right, that, that was my recollection from.
So we'd need some volunteers.
And who oversees the grant?
Who oversees the grant? Does anyone know that?
Who is the fiscal agent, uh, Cam?
That's a really good question. I, I didn't, I didn't ask that. I would assume it's probably the town.
He said the application was due this week. Survey.
It's too bad we didn't join the meeting so that we could get more information and.
But Ryan, you feel comfortable with it?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think it's worthwhile discussion to have if we can do it at no cost to us. Seems like an objectively positive thing.
But Chair Baileywood, I would think if you're in favor, we should support it.
Okay, well. But we've missed the application deadline, no?
Well, they would need the letter of support tomorrow.
You need the letter of support tomorrow.
And we're not out here either.
We have a quorum. Man, I doubt Jake and Pam would be object to it.
Is there a template for the letter of support?
Right, that's the thing, I.
Draft that.
Someone have to draft it.
The letter of support.
Okay. So if the town is responsible for the grant and allocating the grant, who's going to do that?
Well, we don't know that for sure, but that is a good question if that is the actual case.
Mark, do you remember? Can't do it.
Yeah, I remember that Dr. Send the group that he works with found the grant and applied for it and received preliminary approval to go to our town and then one other, so I believe they might be the facilitators of the grants. Uh, but I, I couldn't say for.
Well, at this point, there's no obligation upon us to do beyond the letter.
Right.
What's the harm in going ahead and doing the letter being, getting it going?
Yeah.
You know, back away if you say, wait a minute, this, this doesn't make sense.
Mm-hmm.
Or, that was something he made clear through the discussion was, we have no obligation to do anything with the outcome of this whole process. If we decide this was a waste of our collective time, then we can just and be done with it, or we can move forward with whatever comes from that.
All right, well then, well, I make a motion, we sign the letter of support. Letter of support. Letter of support. Thank you for the. Main Health Access Foundation grant. Second. All's in favor.
Where is the letter of support going to come from? I thought Cam said that they have a letter. Okay, but you should probably just authorize me to sign it on your behalf because or else you'll all have to come in and sign it.
I I amend the motion to authorize Margery to sign the letter of support. Second, all's in favor. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for jumping on and.
Yeah, no, thank you, and uh we'll be working with uh Ryan and uh. We'll all see what we can get out of this. It'll be helpful to the community.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So while Ryan's here, we could just look at the ambulance budget summary. Well, the the summary, the summary. So what? We're both proposing is thirty five hundred dollars more than last year.
Okay.
Overall.
Yeah.
Um, we're increasing the wage line.
Mm hmm.
So why is it? Why is it?
Well, your insurance is coming down. Is that correct?
Oh, right, 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 because we don't need the health insurance. Uh, for Ryan. So that was, you know, that was the big decrease.
Okay.
Uh, we do give him, you know, based on the personnel policy, we um pay out the. Twenty percent of what we would have paid him. There's a like a buyout.
Right, yes.
Um. Most things, most things. Well, let's see, equipment, but that was a specific ask. That was for some radios, right?
Correct, some radios and a new AED box. Um, that's. To bring one that's currently being housed in a private residence to be. On an actual outdoor location and signed correctly, which is a bit more. Effective use of our equipment.
Is the patient transport line, is that? We're still confident that.
I luck, we lucked out the same.
Okay.
Uh.
Same as.
We do the minor increase. I think we increased by.
Well, last year was seventy four and this year was seventy four. Uh, want to look at the detail? I think we both reviewed this.
Yes. Yeah.
And, you know, based on what we've spent in the past. I think we're good. I mean, but we do have to project out.
Hmm, yeah.
For. The possibility.
Is this the the town's portion or is there some offset to or buy it from insurance?
Uh, well, we do collect a certain portion uh of ambulance fees. We never get a hundred percent. There's a there's a huge write off. Um. Last year, it looks like they've been budgeting. Maybe around seventy five thousand in collections. But I haven't. I've got to look at that.
That the ambulance fees?
Yeah, so there is um ambulance fees, but. You um you always have to budget what you think we're going to spend regardless of the offset of the.
Yeah.
Uh, revenue.
Well, I guess my question was, is that really the the hundred percent of the cost of transport or is it a number that's been adjusted for potential fees?
Potential.
Yes.
Yeah. Because we look at the number of runs.
I mean, you can see this fiscal year today were. Were just about half.
This is good information, too. If you want to look at that graph, it's at the the last page. Um.
I want one page.
Yeah, I only have some of it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Corner here.
There's the problem.
Like what? What do you mean more pages?
Just the page you look up. Oh, no.
It, do you have the graph? You have the graph?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's the one. Yeah.
I guess I'll just. Continue with all the detail.
Yes, Marge, please continue.
Oh, gosh.
I mean, this looks fine to me.
Do you want to look at that? The patient transport detail? Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
We'll go make some copies.
That's okay. We're sharing. It's it's good.
Make sure it's in the next sun.
I was trying to save paper.
I'm fine with just the page, page, like we talked about fifteen, twenty minutes ago.
Um.
You know, we could do just have a summary page. I could put it up on the screen.
Brian, uh. I noticed you had a. PIA winter schedule financial. Situation creates uncertain future regarding daytime transport. Uh, what's that mean?
Correct, so I. Believe everyone's probably aware that they've um. For the duration of this winter, they've. Stopped all any and all Sunday flights, including emergency flights. Um. You've had a couple of Marjorie and I, folks on North Haven, you know, some town manager up there as well, having. Had a couple of meetings with them so far and then talking amongst ourselves. Um. There is a strong possibility they're going to be done with Saturday flights. Emergencies as well this winter. That's a strong possibility that they expressed. Um, and really, there's a pretty significant financial. Question mark uh on the future of their operations from. What we've uh. Was described to us my on that most. Um. So that kind of creates a very large question mark for us with how we will deal with patient transport going forward. Um. We've myself and the service chiefs on North Haven have talked to our representatives in. APAM's land partners EMS sort of advocating body in the state. Um, as well, some contacts in Navy and that's they're working on getting some. People from the legislature in legislature interested in sitting and having meetings to discuss uh how we could possibly. Keep things going the way that they are um with. Funding from somewhere, but. Uh, there's a lot of unknowns going forward with what air transportation is going to look like uh if it's going to continue to be there and it's just.
You mean at all?
Uh, there's a some possibility of that there. Expressed some uncertainty about their future.
Uh, so it is a good thing of that. In the reserve.
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Well, that's not the best thing. But it's out of our control.
Sure.
It's something that people are holding. Nothing will come of that. Things will be fine. I understand that this is not the first time that there's been. Questions about their operations, but it seems that they're expressing a little more urgency and requests for assistance from. Us and other island communities.
Ryan has done an excellent job in facilitating meetings uh with. Our island partners and PIA and with his um. What do you call it? APAM's?
APAM's.
APAM's.
Partners EMS.
Yeah.
Okay. My, I don't have any other questions, issues with the budget, right? Again, I just saw that and I was kind of raised flags.
No, no, it's. Good question to ask. Um. Any other questions? Okay. Looks good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
I also finished the library budget. With um. Jennifer. That means fifty five hundred dollars more. Mostly because of wages.
And books.
Yeah, she wanted to go back up to the nine thousand dollars that had already always been in there and her argument was that um. You know, she needs to. Do a lot of replacing, you know, and updating. The books that are in the library, so I don't, you know, I I I know what I'd like to ask you is that. Do you want the department heads to come to? Um. Should we have a few sessions with? Your department heads or? Not sure how you want to deal with that. We've kind of been all over the place and.
I mean, we have in the past, but. For me, I I. I want to see the overall budget.
Mm hmm.
What's our percentage?
I hear you.
And then we can go back. And look at a couple of these. I mean, an increase of fifty five hundred, like I'm not too concerned about that.
Mm hmm.
And they haven't been, basically, what I understand, they have not been purchasing books.
Right, that's another thing that Jennifer.
Catch up that they need to.
She reiterated that that they hadn't been purchasing. Books uh during COVID and just after, and they're really just starting to gear up.
Rejuvenate.
Rejuvenates, good word.
There is a big increase in utilities. Is that? It's fifty two hundred. Is it a will? Is that just? Because everything's going up? And electric. Went down last month, though.
Well, I put the sewer bill in there. The electric bill is averaging about three hundred and fifty dollars a month and. I know that. Last year, we used about fourteen hundred gallons, so I put in fourteen. Fifty gallons at five fifty. Should I reduce the um per gallon price?
No, no, no. I I was just curious. I'm not I'm not.
Yeah.
Asking to reduce. I'm just wondering.
Yeah, that is a big bump.
It's a big jump. Percentage wise and.
Um.
And then I was trying to figure out where where is it coming down to only be a fifty five hundred dollar increase when it's up fifty two hundred there and it's up. But. Almost four K in the wages line, which again, we discussed that already. There's nothing that's really down with. Well, it's the service fee is down and then the training dues and subscriptions down, so that's where you're. Yeah, that's where you're getting. There's some offset there. Yeah.
You know, Jennifer and I went through it pretty carefully.
Yep. Yeah, that's. That's fine.
Yeah.
Certainly, they're running a lot of programs down there for the books. Probably books required.
I'm. So I will work on that overall summary as well as. Um, I don't have the fire department yet.
Because yeah, the 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 big ones is Public Works. Fire Department. The ambulance. Again, others, but.
I have a couple of works done, but we've already went on.
Yeah, we've already.
We got them.
That.
I've got to go back and do some tweaking, I think.
The law enforcement is going to be.
Law enforcement's done.
It's going to be up from last year because we didn't, we took out the second deputy, but.
The chief, yeah.
I know, I know in here, I'm just saying, if you were looking at it, you're.
Right.
It's a big.
That's true.
And they've numbered they're in line with the new contract. No, the the numbers for law enforcement.
In there are for two people.
Yeah.
Housing and paying for two people.
Yeah, but I meant was that I I was assuming that there was a wage adjustment or adjustment on the. On the cost from Knox County that I didn't. I'm assuming it's them. I don't know.
They just say, all they say is that they pay half of one person. And a hundred percent of the other one, so maybe I should touch base with um Paul and say, could you? You know, could we tweak this any finer to say? You know, what? What are you? What are you proposing? Because it depends on who they hire and at what.
Salary and.
Yeah, because it's all union.
Mm hmm.
So when they hire somebody, they know what that person's going to be paid because it's unionized.
Which means if we don't know, we probably ought to bump it up just to have a little bit of a. But if they can give us that information, be great.
Yes.
It'll make it, it'll be an easier. Yeah. It'd be less, you know. Less going, less mystery.
Less football.
Right. It's a more accurate. Yeah. Estimate. Because the biggest part of the entire budget is going to be the school and I can almost guarantee you that is going to go up way more than. Even if we only got five, I bet they're going to go up ten.
So.
You don't have a damn thing to say about it. I have things to say. It doesn't mean anything.
Right.
Influence on there. I know, I have.
I don't, I don't feel like I have that far to go to finish that whole summary.
Okay.
I mean, there's CEO, fire department. Mark does the fire department, though, so. It's not so much work. It's just sort of reviewing it with him and whether I agree or disagree with him.
Okay.
And um. You know, going through capital projects. The CEO budget, but that's a small um.
Yeah, that's a small.
Animal control. So I feel like, you know, we've. Gotten quite a bit done. Um.
Have we? Done legal fees and? We talked about. We did that. Oh, yeah, because we split it differently. Yeah.
Yes.
Right, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
We upped it to eighty thousand, thirty five, forty.
Thirty five, forty, that's right. Okay.
Um. What was the other one? Toward ambulance, library? Oh, harbor master.
I thought we went over that one last time.
I thought we went over this one, too.
Because that one was going up because.
The floats in the.
Up at the third, yeah.
Well, that was the the property, the town war property.
Ah.
This is mostly wages and.
Yep.
Maybe supplies, gas for the boat.
Yep.
There's really not much in there other than um. Those stipends that we pay. Harbor master and assistant harbor master. I got to say that Pete, the assistant harbor master has been very helpful. He came to um. One of the downtown project meetings. We met with the engineers to. Talk about, you know, the our. Harbor facilities and what's needed and, you know, because, you know, phase two and three of. The downtown project include. Uh, the waterfront areas and.
Which is great.
Those floats, those, the. The parking lot. Ramp, rather, the parking lot ramp and the uh the one next to the next to the fish plant.
Yeah.
That ramp.
Yep.
Um. As well as other, you know, pilings, replacing pilings.
Yes, pilings and ladders.
Ladders.
Yes, and places to tie up.
Yeah.
So you're not risking life. Up and down. It's quite sketchy.
Have we done administrative building yet? Now, looking at this building out here, we can't ignore this much longer.
Yeah, we have talked about Washington School, haven't we?
Yeah. But have we done? If we make, I can't remember if we made adjustments on any plans to do some work. And we had money in.
Money in there for improvements and I'm I'm working on it. I had some interior painting. I had some work done out back here to cut down. A bunch of trees. Um.
A lot of rotten wood, though.
You mean on the uh siding, yeah.
That means.
I just have to find somebody.
Right, it's finding someone to do the work. Yeah. We've we've had it in the budget for two years at least, I would say. Again, if the economy goes further south, it may have a little less problem finding workers.
Yeah, it's been in the budget since I've been on, so it's going on two years.
If we don't do something, we're going to run into much more expense. Right.
Somebody was asking me if we blew in insulation when we gutted the building, did we blow? And they said that some buildings that were. They um blew in insulation, had problems with. The same kind of problems that we're having, but I don't know why that would be.
Yeah, because that happened a lot because you lose air flow and therefore all the. It rots, yeah.
About air, airflow.
Mm-hmm. I don't know if that's it.
It's a possibility. I don't know what was done. When that was done, that was before.
I could look at it.
But you don't need to look very hard, there was no, something need to be done, oh, yeah.
All right, do we have anything else in the, in the budget tonight or?
Um, do you have any questions for me? I'll try to get that, um, summary. Done, so you've got a bigger, the big picture about where we stand overall, um.
Well, I would ask one thing, though, if you're going to meet with the budget committee, the, the. But be. Be really good to get them to be more active to take some of this off the view if they possibly could.
Like.
You know, help them put this stuff together, no, I don't know what they're. Yeah, they're.
Mm-hmm.
They ought to be able to deliver a lot of this stuff with recommendations to bring to the board, so we're not going down, have to go into the minute detail like we talked about.
I think.
If we could find a way, I don't know if we ever find a way.
For me to present something.
That, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's their expectation.
That's how it's been is. Town manager works with the department heads, pull the budget together, presents it to the board and the, the two boards. Um, the two boards review, ask questions, give their recommendations.
But again, it'd be good to, it's, it's the, it's the. Department heads could meet with the budget committee as they go through and that would be take. A lot of the owners offer you if they could pick that up or some of that.
I'll see what they would like.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be up to their discretion how they wanna proceed, I mean, yeah, that's.
It's hard to push forward.
No, exactly.
Right.
I'm gonna defer to them, though.
But it will also give them more autonomy, I think, more, more, more ownership of the work. I don't think there's much ownership right there now.
Well, they haven't had, um, a lot of people serve, right? I don't know what it was like last year, would who?
I was on that last.
You were on there last year.
And I was here.
It was still Bill.
Bill, Eric Davis.
Eric Davis.
Margaret.
Margaret. I think that was it, right?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yep. All right.
Are we?
We'll move on to town reporter, town manager.
Uh, I think I've already. Talked about the, these things. For instance, the, the meeting tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And the budget committee meeting. I wanted to remember. So, I think we've already talked about those two things that I wanted to make sure you knew about.
Okay. Report of members.
I just wanna say I was very happy with the meeting this morning. I thought we made good progress, Paul in particular, extremely pleased with the staff we had. And.
Paul was the. He's the captain, okay, yeah.
The guy in the blue shirt.
Captain.
Right?
Yeah, he's a deputy chief, deputy sheriff, he's a.
Second in line.
Kurt's a new boy, he's a, he's been really good to work with.
Chief, captain.
And, and drop it, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I worked that correctly. I agree, I thought it was. Excellent meeting, great first step.
And I think the desire is there to do something.
Yeah, I, I. It was great to actually talk to them and know, hey. We are on the same team, they do wanna help us. There are run into issues, just like, you know. Everywhere else with hiring. And there's always gonna be logistics. Serving the island because it's an island, that's just the bottom line.
Paul keeps says, I, Paul keeps saying to me, I can't believe you came back.
And she's saying, neither can I.
He said it to me about ten times. And he goes way back, too, like.
And so. So, yes, everyone get the word out there that housing is needed for our deputy who, we hope, will be here sometime this year. It's something the community has said for years that they want, so.
It's awful, let's.
Um.
Let's hope.
Sir, is there any, uh, thought about buying real estate?
I'm all for it, I am, Phil, but we, as was mentioned, we need a short-term solution now, something.
Right now, yeah, we need a rental.
But for the future, I agree, the town needs to have. Property, properties where they can house people that will do work for the town, whatever that may be, whether it's.
Well, if I, you know, if I know of something that's coming, that's come up for sale. I mean, I don't know how to approach. I mean, I can't make it, I can't make an offer on something or how do? Do we have to put something in a reserve fund toward that? I mean, we don't have. A few hundred thousand dollars available just to go spend on real estate.
Oh, just go write a check, Marge.
I think, I think.
Is that something we should be?
Warrant for the, for the town meeting.
Yes, we put it in the budget and be like, this is money we wanna use towards housing for. Employees, essentially, that's what it would be. That doesn't mean the town couldn't then turn around and rent it out as a space. If it wasn't being filled by an employee.
The prob, not the problem, but the issue that we had, uh, years ago, when we had resident deputies, is that. Um, if, if the town found a place. The deputy, it might not fit with that deputy and their family.
Right.
So then we went to the solution of saying, okay, you find the rent that you want and then we'll subsidize that by a thousand dollars a month. The twelve thousand dollars a year, and that seemed to work really well, and then the lease was the deputy's lease. Cuz we got stuck a few times before we moved to that model. That we'd get a resident deputy and, and the town would sign a lease, but then that deputy would leave.
Right.
So we got stuck.
The way I understood it today, when the issue of housing was brought up, was it, it was their issue. The housing issue was their issue to solve, not ours.
No, they want, they want assistance from us for sure, I mean.
Right, but I mean, they didn't expect us to go out and find.
No, they're gonna be, they're gonna be looking for housing as well, I, that's what I took from it.
Right.
Yeah, but we, as a town, something we said we want, we should be able to help assist with that wholly in some way. I'm not saying the town's gonna go and find something, but.
Yeah, so if we found a house, for instance, and bought that house. For housing whoever, um, and, but that didn't fit this particular resident deputy. I see that as a possible issue because it, as I said, we. Uh, we used to, you know, rent an apartment or a house, sometimes it was a, a, a whole house. But then whoever the deputy, resident deputy was, that housing didn't work for them for whatever reason. And then the, the town would get stuck or the res, or that resident deputy would leave.
Yeah.
So we went to a different model to say, okay. We'll subsidize it, but it's gonna be, you find your, the rent that you want, you sign the lease and we'll subsidize.
Which I think, I think we're still gonna do, but I think. The longer term is the town does need to have some housing available to us at times when.
For whatever.
For different, whatever projects that there are, so that is something the town should be looking into doing, yes, agreed.
And if you have, if we own it rather than leasing it, we have the option to gain our money back one way or another.
Right.
Whereas for a lease, you kind of, you know, you're stuck.
You're stuck, right.
So leasing, I don't think is a good idea, I think.
No, I don't think the town.
Oh, I could just make some inquiries about properties that I know are coming up for sale, but. I guess all I could do is let you know about them.
What are they gonna do with cars, is that gonna go up for sale?
I don't have the foggiest idea. I don't have anything, GW.
Okay.
I don't either.
Motion to adjourn. All's in favor.
Second.
Seconded.
Six forty.
Like six thirty-nine, but. You can run that, you can win.
Yeah.
A good day.